Good afternoon. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session. Item number one is “Call the Audience.” Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight’s meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the “Call to the Audience” portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Item number two is “Call the Audience.” The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the Issue-Review Session and Committee of the Whole Items on this Work-Study Session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards this afternoon?
None received. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Which actually then, actually, let me just ask really quickly too, just to be safe, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council at this time? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting and move to item number three, which is our Issue-Review Session. Item 3A is our Public Art Plan Update. And so I’m going to bring up here Brenda Abney, Rebecca Rothman, and Josh Lapp. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. It’s good to see you. I’m Brenda Abney, Deputy Community Services Director for Arts and Culture. I’m here with my colleague Rebecca Blum-Rothman and Josh Lapp of Designing Local. We’re here to present an update of the public art planning process, which we’ve been engaged in for the last 10 months. And this presentation aligns with the city’s Quality of Life Performance Measures, specifically 3.17 Quality of Community Services Program. And at this time, I’d like to turn it over to Rebecca Blum-Rothman.
Hello. Thank you for having us once again. Really exciting day for us to share this with you. What we’ll do just in this presentation is give a quick review of the public engagement input, which you should have as part of your executive summary, highlight some items from our current inventory, and share with you where we’re going from here on out in the next steps. Before I hand it over to Josh to give this presentation, I just want to remind everyone kind of what public art is and what we do. And what we do is we look at the built environment and creating innovative ways of creating landmarks to advance Tempe as that vibrant location that we all know it to be and to promote that artistic expression within Tempe. And we’re really thrilled to be working with Designing Local on this journey to bring us into the future.
Hi, everyone. Very excited to be here. My name is Josh Lapp. As Rebecca mentioned, I’m with Designing Local. My firm is based in Columbus, Ohio. We’re relatively small, but we do work all over the country, so we’re really excited to be here working in Tempe. And in addition to public art planning, we also do arts and culture, historic preservation, and community engagement, as well as landscape architecture. So we kind of have a lens for all things arts and culture and are really excited to be collaborating with the team here on the Public Art Plan. As mentioned, or as I should have mentioned, one of the awesome things about working with Tempe is the depth of public art in the community, and we’ll get to that in the future. But I did a little research and the program was actually, the first ordinance was passed like a month before my birthday, which I think was in May, my actual birthday, so it’s just about to be 36 years old. I know I don’t look 36, but so there’s a, and there’s a huge amount of public art based on the length of the program, so we’ll look at that in a moment. But let’s dive into engagement. So as part of the planning process, we’ve done a really deep amount of engagement, and you have the engagement report in your packet, I believe. We’re really proud of the cross-section of the community that we’ve been able to reach as part of the engagement process. And that includes geography, that includes different levels of involvement. So we’ve had business owners, we’ve had artists, we’ve had people that just came off the street into our event, which is wonderful, and we’ve also got people who are really highly engaged. So we might not have reached every resident, but we reached a large number of them and we reached a really nice cross-section that gave us feedback. And, you know, I’m not going to go dive into all of these, but what we were really looking to learn as part of our engagement efforts was a little bit more of an understanding about Tempe and about how people view the community, also about their priorities for public art. So if you dive into some of these survey responses, I think you’d see that what really people are looking for is art that impacts their daily life, that’s integrated into the community, and that celebrates the story of Tempe. So that was really informative for us as we’re moving forward, developing the plan. You know, we are looking to understand where people hang out in the community, where they gather, how they interact with their public spaces, and ultimately what type of art they would like to see more of in the community as well. And this was a little bit unique. We see a lot of really great pieces in the collection that are integrated into architectural elements, so that was something that really stood out to us and something that was definitely unique to Tempe compared to other communities that we’ve worked in. We took all the information we gathered and tried to distill that down into a series of takeaways that kind of give us a sense of the overall feeling towards public art in the community. So folks want public art that reflects Tempe’s identity, that integrates public art into their daily lives, that’s interactive and engaging, that is equitably distributed throughout the community, that supports local artists, and that addresses challenges beyond just the art community. So these are, these are the takeaways we have from the public engagement that we’ve had. You know, basically, this is what we’ve heard. This is not necessarily all of our recommendations. We’ll get to that in a moment, but this is a strong sense of what we heard from the community. We have done a little analysis work, and so we wanted to share that as well because it’s really interesting. This is a map of the public art collection in Tempe. You know, you’ll see, we zoomed in on downtown. There is a good density of artwork in downtown. Much of it is not actually owned by the city, which is, you know, interesting. There’s Valley Metro pieces, there’s ASU pieces, but they do add to the distribution into the overall community. So all, this map is again in the packet, so you’ll be able to dive a little bit deeper into that, but it’s really interesting. Even more so, what’s interesting, we have done some analysis of access to public art in Tempe, and I have to say, this is, this was a kind of shocking to us as we looked at this map. You know, we have heard like, oh, there’s not, I don’t have a piece of art in my community. Well, actually, it’s extremely well distributed. I actually think that I’ve, among all the communities we’ve ever done this in, this is by and far and away the best, by like orders of magnitude. Almost 100% of people are within a 20-minute walk of a piece of public art. And almost 80% of people are in it, within a 10-minute walk. So that’s crazy good. You know, that doesn’t mean there’s not a little bit of work to do. There definitely is. But it also, you know, wrote, like, it said to us that we actually need to look about at how we can level up the artwork that we’re doing to ensure that people do understand that it’s distributed throughout the community, to ensure that people know where it is, know that they have access to it, and then for us, you know, doing even greater, better pieces of public art, more engaging pieces of public art, so that people can feel that sense of community around the artwork. But I really have to like give a congratulations to not just Rebecca and her team, because this has been, you know, it’s been a longstanding program, but the work that has been done is really impressive and is a very strong foundation for future work. We also see that, you know, Tempe, we have some images that show how artwork has been integrated into the built environment over the years, and we have been using these as a tool for us to understand from the public where they’re looking to see more artwork integrated into the future. So this is something that we’re continuing to explore, to understand where and how we should integrate additional public art into the built environment, whether that’s in public spaces, trails, parks, and also other types of infrastructure. So now we’re moving into the plan framework. So this is really the foundation for the Public Art Plan. And the reason we’re bringing it forward now, both to the public and to you, is because we are interested in making sure that everybody is on board with the foundation before we move on to the rest of the planning process. So just to give you a little sense of where we’re headed, we’ve put together what we’re calling a series of aspirations, so things that the public art program aspires to in the future. So that’s creating moments of surprise, wonder, and playfulness, and reflecting the fun, eclectic Tempe vibe. That’s something that we’ve heard a lot, is like, I want to maintain that Tempe vibe. So we have to try to define what that is and then also work to express that in the built environment. Connecting people to natural and urban systems, so public spaces, facilities, infrastructure, transportation. Conveying the many stories and dimensions of Tempe’s history and culture, and then providing pathways for artists to explore their practice through public art. So creating more opportunities for artists and telling the story of Tempe. We also put together a series of intentions for the public art program internally. So this is kind of how we can turn internally focus our energy. So ensuring the program is sustainable into the future. Again, a lot of work has been done. We want to make sure that it’s sustainable moving forward. Taking it to the next level. I, I could go back to that map and say Tempe is clearly a leader in public art nationally. I think, you know, I knew about the program before I worked here. And so really, it’s just building on what we already have and taking it to the next level. So being the national leader and being somebody that gets called upon for their public art program. And then getting the most out of resources, so exploring ways to build on the resources that we already have. And then we’ve also put together a curatorial framework, and this is really to help guide how the collection, how the collection can be expressed. So some information for Rebecca and their team to follow and to help provide artists a sense of how the art should, you know, look and feel in the future. So color, light, sky, land, water, these are natural elements, and that’s something we heard a lot about. People care about the natural elements in Tempe, so building upon those. Local history and culture. Indigenous traditions and visions. So we, one of the first things we did is met with the Huk Yu Collaborative here in Tempe, and it’s really important for us to have that as a foundational element, both engaging, you know, with the past, but also engaging with communities that are here today and thinking about that as a really important thing. So having those voices and stories be a part of moving forward. And then also surprise and innovation. So we heard a lot about innovation, and that was something that’s really important for us to think about too. How can we be innovative in the public arts sphere? So a little bit about where we go from here. So step one and two of the process are effectively, you know, complete or wrapping up. So we showed all of the feedback that we’ve gotten, the community identification of needs. We put together this foundational plan framework and got a lot of feedback. We had an event at TCA two weeks ago and have gotten a lot of feedback on the work that we’ve already done. Moving forward, in May, June, July, we’ll work on creating additional analysis and the formulation of the draft plan along with recommendations. So that will take us through the summer, and then we hope to roll out a final plan document in the fall. Anything to add, Rebecca?
I think you covered it.
Here we go to questions and comments.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I’ll look to the council to see if there’s any comments or questions on item 3A. Vice Mayor Garland?
I love this presentation and the background information that you gave us. This is really wonderful. I, I was very surprised showing, and same thing you guys were saying, is how close we are to some of the artwork that we have in our community. I thought it was very interesting that the most popular thing you have found was the rabbits, that people seem to just absolutely love. But I do want to say, I love the fact that you’re looking at doing some of the indigenous art. I think we have a lot of really cool artwork in our city, but I would love to see if there’s opportunities to put more indigenous artwork in there. And it’s not even so much of the older tribal symbols, but there’s some really amazing indigenous artists from the local communities here. So I’m glad that you have that as a part of it, but I thought this was wonderful. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else on council have any other comments or questions on item 3A? Yes, Councilor Adams?
Yes, are we looking at the utility boxes also that line our streets? I was in Scottsdale recently and they had, theirs painted really pretty, and I thought it was a great idea for us to do the same thing.
Well, what we’ve done actually is ask Designing Local to give us some aspirations and some building blocks that we can then work on those specifics. And I know we’ve been in conversation with your office about some of them in South Tempe already, and we’ve got a few that we’re looking at now.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Councilor Hodge?
Thank you. The presentation was phenomenal. I loved the artwork and all of it. When we talk about being inclusive, are we working with our, with Dr. Humes to make sure that we hit markers of everybody? Like Tempe is made up of so many. I want to make sure that everybody is included in the artwork that they do.
Absolutely. In fact, the Human Relations Commission that Dr. Humes obviously is the liaison for was one of the first commissions that we gave a presentation to, and we’ll be pulling in a lot of those folks to serve on selection panels into the future and beyond.
Thank you. Anyone else on council, any other comments or questions on item 3A? All right. Seeing none, great presentation. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You so much.
Right. That brings me to item 3B, and I think Brenda’s not going that far, I see. We’re going to, if the Tempe Center for the Arts update, that would be Brenda Abney and Mary Beth Reeves.
Hello, once again, Brenda Abney, Deputy Director for Arts and Culture with Community Services Department. I’m here today with my colleague, Mary Beth Reeves. And we are going to give an update about what’s happening at Tempe Center for the Arts. We’ve come to you a few times to give updates over the years, and it’s generally at a time when there’s some change, evolution. And this, once again, we’re experiencing a moment of growth with new leadership and with exciting new initiatives. There’s renewed energy around our resident companies, our home company, and our own TCA Presents National Touring Season. So this presentation, and I need to, this presentation aligns with the city’s strong community connections and quality of life strategic priorities. The programming portion is specifically addressing 3.17 Quality of Community Services Programs, while the operations portion addresses 3.16 Quality of Community Services Facilities. Programming at Tempe Center for the Arts in the 2025-26 season will offer a dynamic mix of national touring acts, performances by local artists, and free or low-cost community events. TCA and its partners will expand programming beyond the musical focus to embrace a broader range of artistic disciplines and styles. These include theater, dance, comedy, family programming, cultural celebrations, and emerging forms such as a special virtual reality partnership with ASU Gamage. Our season will reflect a deep commitment to diversity and inclusion onstage. Will showcase artists representing a broad spectrum of cultural backgrounds, genders, generations, and abilities. Highlights include an Indian-American modern fusion dance company, global music from a Jordanian singer, a Latina international icon, and a renowned African-American musical group that incorporates American Sign Language into their programming. Shown here on this slide is the, some of the artists that we have booked for the upcoming 25-26 TCA Presents series. We are also proud to spotlight the rich and important work created and presented by our own community. This includes a full season of plays from our home company, Arizona Theater Company, and exciting work from TCA’s nine resident companies. TCA will also explore more free programming with community events to ensure inclusive and accessible arts experience for all. This include our own programming and activities in partnership, such as a Latino New Play Festival presented in partnership with Arizona Theater Company. Along with expanding and diversifying our programming portfolio, TCA will offer scaled pricing for our tickets to our TCA Presents series and make more free programming available to the public. In doing so, residents will have more affordable choices while achieving our revenue targets. Additionally, with this strategy, TCA has reviewed rental rates to determine if they’re competitive with the industry and regional standards. Further details on these operational policies will be provided by TCA Manager Mary Beth Reeves.
Hello. I get the fun stuff. So, but really excited. Strategic planning and strategies for arts event, arts organizations is something that I’m really passionate about. Organizations that cannot be sustainable do not continue. So with the Tempe Center for the Arts, we are entering an exciting moment of transformation. With recent changes in funding and growing demand for programs and facility upkeep, we have a unique opportunity to reimagine how we sustain and grow our programs. While TCA rental rates, sorry, go ahead to the next one. While TCA rental rates, ticketing fees, and equipment charges have remained consistent for nearly two decades, aligning them with current realities will help ensure long-term sustainability and continued excellence in our services. By embracing thoughtful updates, we can strengthen our foundation, support our staff and artists, and continue to deliver outstanding cultural experiences. Our guiding principles have been the ongoing relationship with our resident companies and our home company in long-term rentals and our community groups. We are employing an intentional and values-driven approach to financial adjustments. Throughout this process, we have been focused on balancing financial sustainability and affordability while considering the impacts to our renters, especially our resident companies and home company. This is why we are proposing a stair-step approach to increase, prioritizing predictability and transparency with everyone involved. This work will enable us to continue to offer vibrant, high-quality arts experiences in Here are some rate comparisons among some of our closest, most comparable municipal facilities. We specifically looked at municipal facilities and like-sized theaters to see that. TCA is currently a far under median market value among all of these institutions. Next slide. Here is our stair-step rate increase proposal. What this does is this allows our existing renters and resident companies, if these can go into effect in July, then this means that they will not see the impact until they’re planning their next season. This gives us several months to work with them and help them through this. We are also asking that after FY28, TCA may be able to increase rates annually at no more than the Consumer Price Index for the city of Tempe. This does not mean that we will annually raise it, but that if we need to, we will know the amount by which we can do it annually, and we can do it by no more than that within a given year. This should allow us to be able to stay competitive and keep our pricing where it needs to be without waiting 20 years every time we need to do it. Great. These changes will allow us to continue to provide sustainability to the Arts and Culture Fund, support our subsidized programs, and keep TCA among the most affordable regional venues. Even with those increases, we are still among the most affordable. Communication, implementation, and timeline transparency has been vital to this work and will continue to be. It’s one of our guiding principles. This timeline reflects our commitment to open communication and thoughtful collaboration. By working closely with our resident companies well in advance, we can provide meaningful support and ensure a smooth transition, with rate changes not impacting most of them, as I said, until after 2026. We have a generous window to help the partners prepare. Any questions or comments?
Wonderful. Thank you so much for the presentation. I’m going to look to the council to see if there’s any comments on item 3B. Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mary Beth, I hear great things about you.
Thank you.
Yes, so thanks for helping out with TCA and for all you do. I’ve just gotten so much all positive feedback about the joys of working with you and...
Thank you. I’ve enjoyed working with them and building that relationship.
That’s great. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Quick thing before I go to Councilor Amber and then Vice Mayor Garland, just as a note too, I know that there was a conversation about potential rate changes as well, so I’ll need to go around and see if we can get consensus on that item before we close this conversation. But before then, Councilor Amber.
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, I guess for the record, I am totally fine with the rate increase. I was a little shocked when I, you said that it hasn’t happened in 20 years. I do have one question though, on your appendix, for the regular rate schedule, your overtime for your large theater actually ends up being less than your overtime for your small theater? And it’s just for the regular rate schedule? It’s not that way for the nonprofit?
Okay, I will take a look at that.
And I was just wondering why.
I, I will double-check that and try to, and get back to you with an answer on that.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Vice Mayor Garland?
So when I have been at TCA, which I love, it’s beautiful, just there a couple nights ago for community salutes, and it was fun to be in there and actually sitting next to somebody, my brother, who had never been in the theater and just realized how spectacular it was. Are we so full all the time that we need to be increasing rates? Because when I have been in there, it didn’t, the multiple times I have been there for different events, it didn’t ever seem like we were all, everything was full. Are we, are we at capacity when, like every night, are we at capacity or close to capacity?
I can say for next season, every weekend night, we have, we are booked for the next season.
And what about weekday?
And weekdays pretty much as well. We have a couple of openings, but we are working to fill those more proactively.
Okay. Okay. I just, I was just curious, because I, I was just curious about that. Okay. And then, let’s see, so I think going through the rates, I mean, if we haven’t increased them in a really long time, I think it’s appropriate to do that. So I’m, I’m in consensus with doing that if, when that comes up. And then just one other crazy thing, I get asked this every single time at an event, is the film that’s on the window, is that art or is that something that’s temporary? Because it really blocks the view when we’re trying to look outside.
Yes, so it is art, it is temporary, it was part of a previous exhibition, but the reason it is there is that our pond is scheduled to go into repair. And so the idea was to put something on the windows so that we wouldn’t have to look at the construction.
Is it getting done?
Well, you know, it is getting done, it is in process, it has been, we’re working through it, and it has been delayed a little bit, but we are working through that.
I appreciate that, because it’s such an incredible view and it’s distorted with that thing on the window.
We love it, and we’ve had that feedback as well, and we’re well aware of it, and so we’re looking at the timing of it. And as soon as we can bring it down and make that view available again, we will do so.
Okay, great. And I just want to say for the people who have not been to the Return of the Jedi, you have to go, Return of the Force, I’m not sure the name of it, it’s spectacular, and I understand it’s only 10 more days.
Closes on May 18th.
Oh my gosh, you gotta go, it’s incredible. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilor Hodge?
Thank you. Brenda, we work together, and I really enjoy working with both of you for the things we’ve done. My question is, and I’m okay, I think I’m with my counsel, I think that it’s been overdue for 20 years, we do need to extend it, but for our partners, is there any, do we have any discount that we give, like our partners in, like, say like if TCC wanted it or versus like a school district who can’t maybe afford all of it, is there a possible way, like it was like one school or a TCC or something? Do we have that type of discount or is that just straight across the same way?
It’s on a case-by-case basis.
That’s what I wanted, yes.
However, yes, we are looking at that too, is whether we can just design something that’s more consistent.
That’s what I, exactly. You read my mind, exactly, because I get that question asked quite a bit too. If they can’t afford it, but they really do want the luxury of having that, is that something that we can work in there?
Yes.
Thank you.
We’ll work on it.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anyone else on council, any other comments or questions on item 3B?
It’s just a lovely place.
Thank you. It is, it’s a lovely place.
And I also as well am supportive of the rate changes too. Anyone else on council have any issues with the rate changes or we... Anyone else on the council have any issues with the rate changes or we have consensus to move forward on that item?
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings me to item 3C, ambulance transportation update. I'm going to call upon our interim fire chief, Daryl Duty. Also see Chief Deputy City Manager Greg Reese as well.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. I'm here to introduce, ah, Mr. Mayor members of council, Greg Reese interim deputy city manager, joining Chief Duty interim, Fire Chief Daryl Duty up here today, where he is here to give you an ambulance transportation update. Roughly 10 years ago, we stood in the chambers and we presented to mayor and council our concerns with the ambulance industry at that time. At the conclusion of that meeting, we were given a directive to go forward and seek the CON or Certificate of Necessity, which would provide us with the permission through the state to transport sick and injured citizens here in Tempe as well as our neighboring communities. We did just that, and 10 years later, we're here to present the Built Out program. We've, we've been built out for about three years. We wanted to take time to establish the system, get the data, and then come before you and show you exactly what we've been doing since we went into the ambulance business. So I'm going to turn it over to Chief Duty, who's going to share with you an update on the transportation business here in Tempe.
Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm Daryl Duty, interim fire chief. I'm here to present an update on the ambulance transportation program at Tempe Fire Medical Rescue. We're in our third year of full operation, as Chief Reese said, and I'd like to provide an update on how the transition has gone, what the operation looks like today. We'll look at some incident data, we'll talk about staffing and infrastructure, and then we'll also discuss revenue collection and some additional benefits that the fund has provided to the rest of the department. The ambulance transportation operation aligns with council strategic priority, safe and secure communities, specifically performance measures 1.01 ALS response time, 1.02 cardiac arrest survival rate, and 1.03 patient transfer of care. Little history about the ambulance program, as Chief Reese mentioned, sorry, it's habit, as Chief Deputy City Manager Reese mentioned. I can't call you that. In 2016, Fire Medical Rescue was awarded a Certificate of Necessity through Arizona Department of Health Services. It was decided at that time, due to some instability in the private market, that it was necessary to ensure that we had the ability to transport our patients who call 911 in the city of Tempe. We applied for the Certificate of Necessity and were awarded it in 2016. In 2017, we began service with two ambulances, medic units 271 and 276, which are stationed on Apache Boulevard and Ash respectively. In 2019, we added two additional units, and then in 2022, we added the final two that we have today. Today, we have six advanced life support ambulances staffed 24/7. That includes 39 operational employees, 18 EMTs, and 21 paramedics. We made the decision to staff the ambulances with paramedics for efficiency's sake. That means if they have an advanced life support patient that's a serious injury or illness, they can turn it over to the ambulance to be transported, and then the fire crew can go back in service. We have one administrative employee, an ambulance transportation supervisor, and that person liaisons with our third-party billing contractor, they're responsible for documentation, compliance, and billing to make sure that we're reimbursed properly for the service we're providing. The EMTs and paramedics work in the fire stations alongside the firefighters, they work the same schedule, so 24 hours a day, and that's been a really beneficial program and schedule for them. So today we have, sorry, this slide shows how we transition from the third-party contractor to TFMR ambulances over time. You can see the ramp-up in our operation in the dark blue line at the top, and the gold line is our third-party contractor. We made sure to work with them very closely to make sure we had the right number of ambulances in the city at all times to transport the patients as necessary. We strive to be as efficient as possible with our ambulances, and as part of that, we want to make sure that when they're dispatched, there's a very high likelihood that they will transport a patient to the hospital. We have written dispatch protocols that provide for our ambulances to keep them available for critical calls. The bar graph you can see here, the number above the bars is the total number of calls that the patient, that the ambulances are running every year, and then the number in the, the percentage in the dark blue area is the percentage of time that a transport occurs when dispatched. The light blue area is the percentage of time that they are not transporting a patient. Our goal for this metric is 80%, and you can see we consistently exceed that. Another important aspect of ambulance operation is having the right number of units in the city and having them properly dispersed to ensure fast response times. To make sure that we are able to respond as efficiently as possible, we monitor something called unit hour utilization. That's the percentage of time that units are on calls for service. It's important to note that this does not include training, maintenance, or administrative work that these employees are performing, this is solely time on incident. The slide shows our unit utilization for all of our ambulances, and you can see that we are consistently between 20 and 30%. That's the sweet spot where we want them to be. When we approach 30% consistently for a unit, that's our indication to begin planning to place another, another unit in service. The outlier to those percentages is medic 275, you can see M275 there. That's a little bit slower than the rest of the units in the city, and the reason for that is that's a response time placement. While they run fewer calls, medic 275 is at station number five, which is on Curry Road west of Scottsdale, and that's to ensure that we can meet our response times in the north part of the city. Here we can see advanced life support transports versus basic life support. Advanced life support are time-sensitive illness and injury, or incidents requiring intervention by a paramedic. So those would be cases like heart attacks, strokes, gunshot wounds, major car accidents with injuries. Basic life support would be less acute illness and injury, so someone that's been sick, but their vitals are still stable, or a more minor injury, they still need to go to the hospital, it's just not quite as time-sensitive. You can see in this graph that the percentages are remaining consistent over time. This next slide shows our top three destination hospitals. Our top three hospitals are Honor Health Tempe, or previously known as Tempe St. Luke's, Banner Desert Card and Children's Hospital, and Honor Health Osborne. 80% of our patients or more are split between Honor Health Tempe and Banner Desert. And then for Scottsdale, that is a trauma center, a stroke center, and a cardiac receiving center, so any of the critically injured or ill patients that are in the north, you know, third of the city end up going up to Scottsdale, and that's because that's a critically, a critical destination for them. All right. For billing and collection, this table, you can see the top blue line, that's the number of transports the ambulances are making every year. The bottom two lines are billing and payments, the orange line is the gross charges for service. Our rates are set by the Arizona Department of Health Services. The green line is the reimbursement that you can receive. So there's a, you can see there's a difference between what we bill for and what we actually receive, and that's due to a variety of reasons. A lot of it is the contractual obligations that we make with the insurance providers through the third-party contractor, and then we're reimbursed for that service. You can see the slight dip at the, in fiscal, in, sorry, in year 2024, that was a reimbursement issue that's been resolved. I just checked with our budget and finance supervisor this morning, and a significant portion of those payments that hadn't come in as of 2024 have since been received. It was actually a higher percentage than he anticipated, so that's good news. I am also happy to report that our collection rates are quite good for ambulance service in the state of Arizona, so we're, we have a very high percentage compared to other I wanted to mention some enterprise fund activities. In fiscal year '24, the fund purchased a ninth ambulance. It's very important that we have the correct number of vehicles that are available for us to use. As I mentioned before, we have six units that are staffed 24/7, and then we have three reserve units, so that if an ambulance has to go in for maintenance or repair, we still have a vehicle that we can put the crew in so they can continue to provide service. The ninth ambulance rounded out our fleet and will continue to rotate the ambulances as they reach the end of life and purchase new through the fund. The fund has also contributed over $1 million to our Fire CIP for capital improvements. This is for us to make renovations to the fire stations to be able to house ambulance crews out of there. The forecast for the fund includes all planned increases to personnel costs, inflationary adjustments, and we work closely with the municipal budget office on that. In the near future, we're planning a policy, a fund balance policy implementation. This policy will be established in aligning with the other city major operating funds as part of best practice. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about some additional benefits that the ambulance program has provided to the rest of the department. These have proven to be a tremendous benefit for us. During COVID, we purchased the machines you can see in those pictures to the right. These are, this is a Lucas device, it provides mechanical chest compressions. There are studies that show that it provides better, more consistent compressions than we do when we do it manually. These have been very successful for us on the ambulances since 2020, and we decided it would be beneficial, beneficial to purchase the devices and place them on every response vehicle in the city. So today, every fire truck and ambulance that you see on the street in Tempe has one of these, and they've been a tremendous benefit. So a little short story for you. Shortly after we purchased these and placed them on the trucks, Ladder Company 276, which is right over here on Ash, they responded to a mountain rescue in the city of Phoenix, and unfortunately, the, the person that was having the emergency was up on the mountain, and they were in cardiac arrest. Well, the crew carried the Lucas device up the hill, they placed it on the patient, and then they airlifted the patient at the end of one of those long lines that you see, so they were under the helicopter, and this device was able to provide compressions for them the entire time. That would have previously been impossible without the device, so they're tremendously We've also, we've, we've also been able to hire our first paid medical directors in the history of Tempe Fire Medical Rescue. Previously, we relied on our base hospital, Tempe St. Luke's, now Honor Health Tempe. They provided one for us, but we had no control over who that person was or how much involvement they had in our, in our program. Since then, we have contracted with two physicians who have partnered, and they've been tremendously beneficial for us. They've provided increased oversight, they've made operational changes for us that have improved our operations, and they provide additional training, which is, you know, training from a physician at, at that level is tremendously beneficial for us. And then finally, we have the No2 software for improved transfers of care. That's a software that allows us to transfer the information that we document on our iPads to the hospital, which allows us to do that with no loss of information, it's faster, and it also helps us on the backside when we do our training and our, our quality assurance. So now we're able to get more data, we understand what, what's happening with the patient with a more full picture, and then it allows us to do some targeted training as well. So overall, I'm happy to report the transition to Tempe Fire Medical Rescue ambulance service has been a success. We're providing high-quality emergency medical care and transportation, and we're excited about the future of this service. Thank you for your time, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Chief Duty, Chief Reese, thank you. Let's see, Vice Mayor Garland?
So on, on slide seven, you had the responses that we go to. In dark blue is when we transport it. When we don't transport, is that when they refuse transport, or typically is that?
Thank you for the question, Vice Mayor. It's, it's actually a mixture of things. We're never going to get to 100% because we automatically dispatch on cardiac arrests and violent incidents such as gunshot wounds and stabbings and stuff like that, that it's, we feel like it's critically important that an ambulance be there as soon as possible if somebody's going to be transported. We also dispatch them to other calls to stand by, so structure fires, we dispatch an ambulance on every structure fire in case one of us is injured or needs to go to the hospital, or if we find a patient and they need to be transported, we can do so quickly.
Okay, I, that, thank you for that. It's funny, when I think about this and I think about the ambulance out there, I know a lot of you guys aren't my age, but I think of the TV show Emergency and Squad 51 calling in to rampart and, you know, trying to get information about the patient and what to do, and now we have this Lucas machine that, if I understand, is it correct that we're the only city in the state that has one on every unit?
We are the first in the state to provide one on every unit, yes.
Incredible. Congratulations, you guys, I'm really proud of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, please.
Mayor, can I take a shameless plug here for what you just asked? We often get asked, why did you send the fire truck and not the ambulance? The fire crew has two paramedics, four members, they go and make a decision in the ca, in case, cases where we did not, the dispatch protocol was not necessarily indicating an ambulance was required, shooting, stabbing, certain car wrecks. We allow the crews to communicate with the patient or to make that decision, so we'll be more efficient by leaving the ambulances in service. Because we only have six ambulances to all of the fire apparatus, but we often, well, plug for the why we send the fire truck and not the ambulance, because that's asked all the time.
Great, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Let me go to Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Hodge.
Very impressive presentation. Thank you very much for, for it. I'm just constantly excited about seeing the changes and advances that our Tempe Fire does, and, and they have for many, many years, and you're doing a great job, you both are doing a great job, and I really appreciate what you do for our residents, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodge?
Okay, so I can say that I'm probably one of the ones who uses you guys the most. And I...
We won't respond to that.
No. But just wanted to give just a great thanks, because I've seen it on both ends. I've actually seen the fire department come to me, and I see how you guys bring, if, when I needed to be transported, go right into the hospital. I've also been a lot of times on the fire trucks and see how it actually does, so just commend your whole staff. I mean, the way you present, I've never heard a negative outcome out, come out about the fire department, and I'm just very honored and proud to have such a great fire department in our city.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Hodge.
And as a person who, you know, receptively uses it quite a bit, hands up.
Once again, they can't comment on that public. Anyone else on council, any further comments or questions on item 3C? All right, hearing none. Chief and chief, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, next up, item number four, call to the audience. The city council will put public comment at this time for the committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Madam Clerk, do you have any cards this evening?
Still no, no cards.
All right, then I will look to the audience. Is everybody in the audience wishing to address the city council? If so, please get my attention now. Okay, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting and move forward to item number five A, proposed council subcommittees. Per our city council rule seven subsection 2B, any two members of the council may propose the formation of a subcommittee at a work-study session of the council by identifying the purpose of the proposed subcommittee and the proposed members of the subcommittee and obtaining approval of the majority of the council. Are there any new proposals for a new council subcommittee at this time, council? If so, please get my attention. All right, hearing none, I'll move on to item 5B. Council subcommittee status updates as needed or recommendations for council direction. I'm now going to turn to the council to see if there's any verbal updates on existing subcommittees. First up, item 5B1, Drink Spiking Education Prevention Council Subcommittee, and the chair is Councilmember Keating. Councilmember?
No update, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, item 5B2, Heat Safety for Tempe and Contract Workers Council Subcommittee, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you. Again, Mayor, we do have a subcommittee meeting tomorrow. We have what I hope is a final draft of an ordinance, so we'll be talking about that at committee, and hopefully you'll be seeing it soon.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Item 5B3, Increased Advocacy for Tempe Youth with Disabilities Council Subcommittee, Chair is Councilmember Hodge.
Yes, Mayor, we have a meeting on May, on Friday, May 30th, myself and you. It's between 1:00 and 2:00. This is the Tempe hall, we'll be wrapping up our resource guide, and I'm packing up services individual with a disability and their family, so we are almost at the end of our time.
Excellent. Thank you, council member, appreciate that. Next up, item 5B4, Nuisance Ordinance Council Subcommittee, Vice Mayor Garland.
I just want to say thank you so much to all of our staff members and all of our residents who attended our meetings last week. We passed the nuisance ordinance, so our, our committee is closed, so thank you again for everybody for your help. We're done. We rock.
Wonderful. Mic drop moment for Vice Mayor Garland, thank you very much. Item 5B5, Revitalization of Tempe Town Lake Council Subcommittee, Chair is Councilmember Amber.
No update this time, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you so much. Brings me to item number six, Future Agenda Items. Members of the city council may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session, but in accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Would any council members like to add an agenda item to a future issue review session? All right, seeing none. Item number seven, Announcements for the mayor and/or city manager. I don't have any announcements this evening. Madam City Manager?
No announcements this evening.
Okay, thank you. That moves me to item number eight, which is adjournment.